Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. Eddie Brewer is the pastor at Capitol Hill Assembly of God. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Pettis if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Shall we pray? Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day that you've created, and we can truly say this is the day the Lord has made, and we will rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you, Lord, for our mayor and our city council members and others who serve in our city, and we ask your blessings upon them today as they conduct their business. Lord, your word says that the fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom, and we do ask for that wisdom for each of them and for all those who work in our city. We ask for protection for our citizens, for our police officers, our firemen, and all those who serve in our military here and around the world to protect us and keep us safe. We ask your blessings on this day, and we give you all the praise and glory for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I had the chance to meet Pastor Brewer and his wife Claudia this morning. They have grown up in Dallas, moved to Michigan, but are glad now to be in Oklahoma City and closer to home. They've lived here a few months. Welcome to the city, and thanks for coming down this morning.
Thank you so much.
All right, we're in the office of the mayor, and we're going to have our pet of the quarter. We have Julie Bank, who is here. She runs our animal welfare department, and she has a couple of dogs who I'm guessing could be yours if you get down there first this morning.
I am unbelievably excited to introduce you to this duo. They actually came in separate, both over the counter. Oscar here was actually thrown in a garbage can, and somebody found him when they were taking the trash out. Isn't that horrible that they did that? And then we have this little beautiful girl, Angel. She's the more quiet one, and she was actually brought in over the counter but had some bruises and scrapes. We put them both into foster care. We actually have our foster parent here, Jerita Becker, who's one of our staff members, took them both home and got them back to health. They have been spayed and neutered, and they are ready to go to their new family today at noon. You know, puppies are amazing, but they do have, they take a lot of work. So if you're thinking of getting a puppy, you have to be prepared for chewing and barking and lots of fun and lots of rolling around, but they can be amazing parts of your home. And we're hoping that there's somebody out there who wants one or two puppies available for adoption. They will be available today at noon at 2811 Southeast 29th Street at the animal shelter.
That is, that is great. Thank you for bringing them down. And just a reminder to everyone, we have a wonderful animal shelter, and if these two animals aren't what you're looking for, they have others to choose from. And a reminder to get your pets spayed and neutered. We have, we have spayed and neutered tens of thousands of animals in this city in the last few years, and we can see the difference it's making on the live release rate. The number of animals who are making it out of our shelter now in the home, now the percentage has gone up dramatically.
Absolutely. We've seen an intake, a decrease in intake, which is great, and we think it's definitely a result of spaying and neutering.
Yeah, if fewer animals are coming in when the city's getting bigger, it's because the spay and neutering program is taking effect. So it's a wonderful cause. Thank you, Julie, and I know these two animals are probably not going to last till 5:00 today.
I doubt it, but you could actually visit the website at OKC.gov/animalwelfare to see pictures of all the animals that we have available at the shelter right now, as well as animals that came in on stray holds. If you've lost a pet, you could see pictures of animals there as well.
All right, and we want to thank our foster parents, too, for taking care of these animals and getting them ready for adoption. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Bye.
We're on office of the mayor. We made a slight clerical error here on the item 3B. The appointment of Andy Coats to the golf commission should have been under the PPA, so we're going to strike item 3B. We'll bring it back on a later council agenda and vote on it then. Item 4 is the Journal of Council Proceedings. 4A is to receive the journal for January 5th, and 4B is to approve the journal for December 22nd. Is there a motion?
Move the items.
All right, any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 5 is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, there are a number of them this morning, starting on item 9B1 on page 8. 9B1. Item E, 1719 Northwest 14th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item F, 3010 Southwest 14th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item G, 1215 Northwest 23rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item M, 1505 Southeast 46th Street, we ask that that be stricken. There's a new owner. Item O, 721 Southwest 56th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Moving to item 9C1. Item A, 400 Cypress Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Item E, 5109 Georgia Terrace, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item F, 815 Maryland Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to page 9. Item H, 3314 South Oklahoma, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item J, 7036 South Villa, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item L, 1322 Northwest 8th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item M, 1709 Northwest 9th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item O, 1935 Northwest 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item V, 721 Southwest 56th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item X, 8 Southwest 64th Terrace, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And item Y, 412 Northwest 82nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured. Moving to item 9D1. A, 400 Cypress Drive, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item E, 5109 Georgia Terrace, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Moving to page 10. G, 815 Maryland Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. J, 7036 South Villa, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item L, 19, I'm sorry, 1708 Northwest 9th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item N, 1935 Northwest 16th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item O, 1215 Northwest 23rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item V, 1505 Southeast 46th Street, we ask that that be stricken. There's a new owner. Item Z, 8 Southwest 64th Terrace, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, double A, 412 Northwest 82nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Nothing under revocable permits today, so we'll recess the council meeting convened as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, three items.
More items.
All right, any comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA convened as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority.
Maybe yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the PPA. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA convened as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Just the claims and payroll today.
We have a second.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
With the consent, individual consideration.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the consent docket. Are there any individual considerations?
And there is mentioned 7H.
All right, Mark, you want to get started with Kay?
Sure. In Ward 8, I talked with Bill Elliott with the Oklahoma Bicycle Club, and I'm happy to announce that they received an initiative grant from the Oklahoma City Community Foundation, and they are going to be putting up a bulletin board at Lake Hefner, which advises runners and bicyclers on maps, events, safety, trail etiquette, and health and advice. It is right by the entryway to Stars and Stripes off the trail by the water fountain, and that will be going up in the next, hopefully, 60 days.
Great.
Thank you.
I know trail etiquette is, is an issue that I hear about from time to time. I think that those that run or bike a lot know the rules, and those that bike or run occasionally might not. And so having the rules posted more easily probably would, would help in that situation. Meg, you want to talk about item 8?
If I could just mention item 8, and I really wanted to thank our staff. This is a resolution that will establish a financing plan and to go for, to look at refinancing some bonds in the 2007 bond issue, to save ourselves a significant amount of money. And I just wanted to recognize what a great job they do in looking at those issues on a regular basis and formulating plans for how we might be able to save some money. And in a, coming into what looks like a difficult budget year, if we can save ourselves $3.3 million, that's a fantastic plan. So thank your staff, Jim.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. On to the concurrents docket.
Do those items on the concurrents docket subject to any consideration?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments on the concurrents docket? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9 is items that require a separate vote. Item A is up for final hearing today. This item was introduced by Mark Cranenberg of our airport several weeks back, and it is now up for final hearing. Did anyone show up today hoping to speak on this item? All right, how about a motion then to move it forward? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9B is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9B?
No.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9C is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9C?
No.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9D is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9D?
No.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding some removal of property from the abandoned building list. There are three properties listed. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on any of these three items?
Yes.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. All right, 9F is a resolution that would declare our support for the Oklahoma City School Compact. Do you want to explain, Jim?
Right. Teresa Rose is here, but this is an effort amongst the Oklahoma City School District, the School Foundation, the United Way, the Oklahoma City Chamber, and the City of Oklahoma City to direct the best we can, well, to support the school district in their strategic initiatives and to help direct private resources the best we can toward those ends.
Good morning, Teresa.
Good morning. Thank you. So before you, you have a resolution, as City Manager Couch mentioned, to support the Oklahoma City Schools Compact. So the compact is a new framework of education support in our community where leadership from several kind of big picture, if you will, and I'll go through that in just a second, organizations are coming together, pooling their expertise, their resources, to figure out how we can better support improving education in Oklahoma City. This same resolution was presented last night at the Oklahoma City Public School Board Meeting, and they unanimously approved it. So we are bringing it now to you. I am here representing one of those groups, the Oklahoma City Chamber, and it's one of, as City Manager Couch mentioned, five organizations. So just a little bit of background. Some, some of the groups, these five, but a number of others, have been working on trying to figure out a more efficient and effective way of supporting Oklahoma City Public Schools for several years. In 2014, nine organizations partnered to conduct a community survey about the performance and the perception of our district's performance. These organizations had never worked together before, and that was something that we found really kind of surprising, but also a real critical point of understanding of what was needed to move our community forward with our school support. In that survey, we surveyed teachers and the public and parents, and we came up with a lot of different results, but we recognized that this was really just the starting point. This was the benchmark of how and what we needed to do to better support our schools. The Chamber and others from that survey spent a couple of years, 2014 and 15, really looking at other communities and researching what were other urban areas doing to support the unique challenges that face urban school districts? And we came away with a few lessons learned, if you will. First off, there are no silver bullets. There is no one fix for public education, particularly in urban districts. I don't ca, I mean, no child left behind, whatever the initiative, whatever the challenge is, there is no one way, one key fix for districts. Second, that reform models need to be created organically. What works in Austin didn't work in Nashville. Something different worked in Cincinnati, and something different is working in Memphis. So we're, have the opportunity and the responsibility of looking at what's going to work in Oklahoma City. Third, partnerships are critical to the success. Again, one of the things we learned in all of these cities that we researched is the districts cannot do it alone, that it really has to be pulling together all of the resources to, to address really some of the underlying and critical challenges and obstacles so that children can learn and be successful. And lastly, that it will require patience and a long-term commitment. We didn't get here overnight, and we're not going to get out of our urban education challenges overnight. So in 2015, brought some exciting changes. Superintendent New came to our city, and he initiated, based on the survey results that we had performed, the nine organizations had performed, initiated the great conversation which turned into the great commitment. Somewhat simultaneously, the Chamber began a conversation and put together a task force to say, how can we pull together these resources? What is the structure that will work in this city as compared to what's worked in other cities? So we put together some of what we thought were some great strategic thinkers, Secretary of Education Natalie Shirley, former OCU president Tom McDaniel, former public school superintendent Dave Lopez, and said, what does it look like for Oklahoma City? And they landed on a couple of key issues. Helping the district and the community sustain momentum when there are changes in the elected and professional leadership of the district is critical. This community has got to recognize that we are responsible for the success of our district, not just the faces that are making those immediate decisions. And that to find a way to improve and enhance the involvement and partnerships of many community organizations and individuals that want to help. That was one of the things that we found when we did the survey, is so many organizations want to help, and there are a lot of partnerships that are going on and addressing particular issues based on the particular expertise of those partners in that partnership. But to do something on a broader scale was something that was absent, something that could, again, help support not only the immediate, but the long-term sustainment issues and improvement of our district. So the task force suggested that we put together a new structure, which is the compact, that modeled what has worked in this city before, modeled after the Oklahoma City Maps Trust or Maps for Kids, some of those kinds of structure. So that's what we began having the conversation. We pulled together some initial leaders, the Oklahoma, as, as City Manager Couch mentioned, Oklahoma City Public Schools, the Foundation for Oklahoma City Public Schools, United Way, the Oklahoma City Chamber, and of course, the City of Oklahoma City. The reason that these were the initial organizations, and this is not by any stretch of the imagination, the definitive list of organizations, but we were looking for organizations that had, that weren't either geographically limited, that weren't ethnically limited, that weren't issue-specific limited, but those organizations that had a broad enough reach, had a broad enough net that we could leverage and pull in specific expertise on particular issues. So these were the initial five that we're kind of coining or calling the leadership partners. They will be just the beginning. So what we have in the resolution for your consideration today is included the mission and the vision, and the mission essentially is that Oklahoma City Schools Compact creates, stimulates, promotes, and drives community ownership of Oklahoma City Public Schools and its outcomes. And the vision is that businesses, community organizations, individuals, and district leaders foster partnerships that drive a culture of ownership for supporting, improving, and sustaining district's performance. What we're trying to really create is a community-wide support structure for our schools. The focus, and really at the heart, and I've mentioned this previously, is that the community, that we all recognize that we have a role and that we work with the school district to not be a burden as we try to provide support and additional resources, additional expertise, that we work collaboratively with those educators so that we can address the challenges that are beyond their specific task, which is education. So over time, our, I said this last night incorrectly, I said, my face is going to change. Well, of course, it's going to change. But the names of the people that are elected, the names of the people that are in professional leadership positions are going to change. What this city, what we have to do to have the sustainable improvement for our children, which will support the sustainable progress for our city, is that our community comes together, recognizes that for the long term, we need to provide support and address and support the district as they go forward with their specific mission of education. So with the passage, hopefully, of the resolution by all five of the organizations, what you're committing to is supporting, agreeing to support the efforts of collaboration of the compact. Fundamentally, it will function similar to the Maps Oversight Board, where the governing board will decide the priority issues and then work with task force, and that's where the expertise of particular organizations will be critical in coming together and figuring out how to piece together a better way to support a particular issue or resolve a particular issue. So this is the diagram. We've got the task force, the governing body. The task force will do, you know, really do the, the granular work of, of understanding and dissecting, researching, coming up with plans. Then the governing body will then work with Oklahoma City Public School Board in figuring out how to implement, address, and really move forward on taking care of and resolving some challenges that we have in the classrooms. So with that, our final slide is some of the initial task force issues that we've considered. The district has, so you see there, there's five that the district has set as their priorities that align with the great conversation, the outcome of the great conversation and the great commitment. But they have asked that with the approval of the resolution by all five of the leadership partners, that literacy be the initial project, but those are some of the others that we're looking at. So with that, any questions?
There should be. Any questions or comments from council?
Teresa, as a small example, under literacy, will we work with smaller partners like the Community Literacy Agency and some of these others that have tremendous experience in both adult and youth literacy programs?
Absolutely. The literacy initiatives, the libraries, we're going to have to have some volunteers. So the United Way with their volunteer network, Oklahoma City Public Schools with their Partners in Action, pulling all of those together.
Junior Way just did literacy as their focus.
Yes, pulling those together and recognizing how we can, because literacy isn't just a classroom issue, it is a community issue. But looking at when we focus on a child's reading ability, how can we also work with the family, with the parents, and support their literacy development? So yes, it's pulling, that's exactly, that's a great example of how the compact is designed to work with the task force, pulling together the expertise, both the people who know the topic as well as have the resources to deploy to address a particular issue.
Ed, a couple of questions. I guess one would be, who would be on the governing board, and who would decide who's on the governing board, and exactly what would be the power of that governing board?
Okay. And I believe that's somewhere, I know that resolution is a little bit long, but the way it's set up to start is the five leadership organizations will have two representatives. The general initial concept is that each organization would appoint one of their elected representatives as well as a professional representative. So in other words, United Way would have the chair of the board or somebody that, that the chair appoints, so a volunteer leadership, and then also the president of United Way. So currently, it's Debbie Hampton. But if an organization, if one of the leadership partners wants to do something different, that's absolutely fine. So they would, so there's equal representation of the five organizations. And then from there, their authority really is to convene and discuss and figure out what issues to tackle, and then go out and ask for the support, using the literacy example, ask the libraries, will you please be a part of this task force? So there's no, we don't have any, you know, authority in the punitive kind of respect. It's more pulling together those support organizations, pulling together and leveraging what those five leadership organizations have to bring to the table, and then identifying those, those specific tasks, identifying those particular issues, and then pulling in and, pulling in the issue, or the organizations that have that expertise.
Okay, and so list the five one more time.
Okay. Oklahoma City Public Schools.
Right.
The Oklahoma City Public Schools Foundation. Okay. The City of Oklahoma City. The Greater Chamber of Oklahoma City. And United Way.
Okay.
And specifically from the City, Mayor Cornet and I have been serving on this to date.
Those are, so you two would be the two representatives, and then the Chamber would appoint two?
Correct.
Okay. What, and it's just, and so it would make recommendations, recommendations to the school board?
Correct. But, so yes, but recognize that the school board also has representatives on both the governing body, but then also on the task force. So in other words, when we're talking about literacy, we would have the district's reading professional. We would have a school principal. We will have people that throughout the education system are directly related to and bring the knowledge of, you know, and saying, you know, listen, to have mentors in the classroom, we really need somebody for every single student. It is disruptive for you to take five kids out of my class for, you know, a reading mentor when I've got, because what I have to do is reteach those. I mean, it's, it's having that detailed perspective and information that is critical for the task force to come up with implementations that will be effective rather than disruptive.
Counselman, in the meetings, they've really been strongly driven by the chairman of the, of the school district and the superintendent of the school district, saying that this is an area where, this is one of our strategic priorities, and this is where the private sector can help on this, and can you do this, this, and this to help us achieve this priority?
Well, I would hope they would be driving it since they have the most expertise.
And they are.
Right. One, there's lots that go into schools. One is funding, obviously, and I wonder, will this body make policy recommendations as to the legislature, which was, which was gutting education in the best of, in good A sales tax initiative that's before the Supreme Court and the people? The City of Oklahoma City, which is contemplating six more tax increment financing districts? And there's lots that's been written about tax increment financing and public education. I mean, will this body? I mean, will this body come up with policy recommendations as to funding? Will they, will they send a message to the legislature? Will they give recommendations to the legislature? Will they give recommendations to the City of Oklahoma City or any other entity as to funding?
And we have actually talked about that. We have talked about the issue of is advocacy one of our primary roles? And we have not adopted that as one of our critical roles. However, we all recognize that advocacy is probably organically going to come out of some of the Task Force. In other words, what the Task Force forces, or a particular Task Force may come up with may require, may necessitate that we engage on a particular advocacy role. But advocacy is not our primary function.
But you would be discussing funding?
Yes.
And the challenges therein?
Yes, yeah. So, I guess what I'm saying is we recognize that that's going to be probably part of what, where we go, but our, we're not going to start with advocacy because we want, we want it to, we want to have the advocacy be part of something that is well thought out and well planned as opposed to starting with advocacy. Does that make sense? But we absolutely recognize that all of that, that those pieces are going to come together.
Well, and I just want to give as an example the tax increment financing again, because, I mean, I like what you've said about collaboration, because the situation we found ourselves in a year ago was that it was very obvious that the school board didn't understand tax increment financing, they weren't involved in the discussion in any significant, meaningful way, and that could change if some of these decisions were made where there was that kind of collaboration.
Exactly. And that's a starting point.
Yes, Teresa, I think one of the things that I'm hearing is that this will provide, or will address that issue of patience and long-term goals. You know, it's obvious, I think, that the districts had leadership changes on a routine basis, probably 11 superintendents, you know, since I've been paying attention, and that this sort of removes individual faces from the support network, but provides a longer-term focus. Is that?
That is absolutely correct.
Where we're going.
Right. And as much as we love Superintendent New, I don't think that he's going to be here in 50 years. What this also does, and the school board has acknowledged, and the school board members that have been on the compact have acknowledged and are pleased about, that this would give our community a roadmap so that when that next leader, when we're looking for that next leader, we can say, this is where we're going. Are you on board or not? So that there's not, you know, a derailing with a new initiative, a new plan, a different set of priorities, that we as a community are taking the leadership role and saying, this is what our district, this is what we want for our district. Can you make this happen?
That's great.
Can I? Do you think that this, that the school board could be intimidated by this body? I mean, could there be a loss of autonomy? I mean...
Haven't been so far.
I don't know. I doubt that, really. I mean, I'm a little, I have a lot of concerns about this, but I don't think school board being intimidated is one of them, frankly. I think that we have a really excellent school board and people really committed and hardworking and involved, and I doubt very seriously that anybody would intimidate them. I think they're hampered by lack of resources. I think that's the biggest problem the school, the school board, they just don't have the resources.
They're just overwhelmed?
Yeah, the, you know, I've been involved with, what, three or four years now with the joint Task Force that we've had, and we've had a lot of accomplishments, but many, many of the things we could have accomplished have not been done because just lack of resources and the fact that the board itself is so overwhelmed with the day-to-day. You know, I've got, I want to tell the story about, my friend Ron Milliken is a board member, and right after he got elected, we, he and I were at a Thunder basketball game, and a lady came up to me and started talking to me, and of course, she didn't know him because he's a school board member. Nobody knows who the school board members are. So, I introduced him to this, it was a reporter, I introduced him to the reporter. And she said, oh, in this great, she said, what was the effect of yesterday on public schools because it was a snow day? And he said, that meant 30,000 kids didn't get to eat yesterday. And, of course, she was about 19, she didn't understand what he meant, but I've never forgotten what that meant. It meant that the job that my mother had when she was a public school teacher is so different now, that the job is so different now. They have to worry about whether the kids are warm, they have to worry about whether they eat or not. It's just an overwhelming job, and hopefully, this will move in a direction of trying to give them the resources that they need to try to solve those problems. I'm not, I'm not concerned about that, although I do think the possibility exists. Many of the people that are now on board as part of this compact have not really been friends of public education in the past. Maybe this will make them friends of public education. They've been much more friends of privatizing schools and vouchers and all the BS that goes along with killing public education. And so, I'm hopeful maybe if they get in the boat with the I-89, they will understand the problem is greater than just sending all your kids to Cassidy. It's a different world out there.
Right, well, Teresa, thanks for your work on this.
Can I respond real quickly?
Yeah, sure.
Mr. White, you say it beautifully and perfectly, and that is exactly what the outcome goal of the compact is. What we are asking our education and educators, our education industry and our educators to do is far beyond just educating. And part of what the compact's desire is, is to take care of and remove from the classroom the responsibility of feeding and clothing and counseling, and why didn't you sleep last night? And, you know, let's take some of those responsibilities and put them where they need to be so that our education system can educate. So, thank you for, that's a great point, that's exactly the core, and thank you for recognizing that. And, Mr. Shadid, I would say that as far as how the school board feels, we had to get there, but based on the feedback last night at the school board meeting, they are all in, they recognize that this is an opportunity to receive more genuine and effective support, not just somebody coming in and shaking our fingers at them and saying, you're not doing a good job. So, I think the board, the school board, does not see this as a threat. They understand and recognize that this is a supportive tool for them to begin to use.
And I appreciate that. The one imbalance of power that I just hope is recognized is that all of these, all these taxing, all these jurisdictions rely on the chamber to run any bond issue or anything that requires a vote of the people. And so, there is an inherent kind of imbalance there, where if you upset the chamber, maybe they don't help you as much in the next bond that that board very much needs and wants. And so, that, I guess, is my concern. I think we can get past it. I just think that there are some inherent imbalances there.
Teresa, we really appreciate the support and all the work that's gone into this. Look forward to the meetings in the future.
Okay, thank you for your time.
All right, this is item 9F. Is there a motion? All right, cast your votes. Passage unanimously. Item 9G is a resolution that would designate Crystal Lake as a city park. Larry, are you okay with this?
Yes, I am. I see Doug here, and would you like to make some comments on this? For those of you that may not be familiar with Crystal Lake, it's a tremendous asset located just off of Interstate 40 and South MacArthur. It's been operated over the last several years by City Care, Larry Bros and his group. One of the missions that they have carried out and been very successful with is taking kids who otherwise would not know what's going on in the great outdoors to come out to Crystal Lake during the summertime for some camping and education experiences. It's now open for the public. It does have some challenges, and this particular making it a city park without going into the depth of those challenges will really help.
You're correct, Councilmember Doug Copper, Director of Parks and Recreation. We see the success that City Care has had at this city property over the years, and I actually came into the organization thinking automatically that it was a park, it's such a dynamic area, so many great activities going on. But through the help of Chief Cities folks, we discovered that it is not a park, and therefore cannot be, the laws protecting youth from sexual offenders and things along those lines can't be enforced at Crystal Lake unless it is identified as a public park. So, that's one of the main things that we want to do. We want to make sure that the children that come out there are protected, and we, the city can use its resources to do such things. Also, City Care has done a dynamic job of doing improvements out there, picnic shelters and restrooms and things along those lines. We have the fishing dock, it's a close-to-home waters. We want to make sure that we can continue those good works and working with City Care in the future if this governing body chooses to have another GO bond and include Crystal Lake Park, if it's approved today, into those planning purposes. I'd be happy to answer any other questions. It doesn't change City Care's contract. City Care is through the River Trust, and the River Trust has the agreement with the city to operate these properties, so it doesn't really change anything that City Care has done.
That was going to be my question. I'm a big supporter of City Care, and I love the work that Larry does and his staff. And so, I know there's some type of contractual lease arrangement, and I just was wondering what the impact of this resolution would have on those leases?
It doesn't change that agreement, just kind of changes the underlying property that they're managing for us.
I'd like to move for approval.
All right, cast your votes on item 9G. Passage unanimously. Item 9H, understand we do need executive session on this item?
Yes, sir.
All right, how about a motion to move 9H to executive session? Cast your votes. Passage unanimously. And item 9I, understand we do need executive session?
Yes, sir.
All right, cast your votes. That item moves to executive session as well. Item 9J is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under item J, claims recommended for denial? Come on forward, please. Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record.
My name's Thomas Webb. I live at 3101 Delt Drive, Yukon address, but it's Oklahoma City. My parents bought the house in 1983. From 1983 until 2007, we had no flooding. In 2006, the city repaired the, redid the street and parked the equipment in the ditch next door to us in the drainage. This damaged the drainage. In 2007, we started getting flooded. We were flooded four times. I complained several times. 2008, we were flooded twice more. They came out and reworked the ditch where the, it had been damaged by these large machines, I mean, tires this wide, this tall. And we thought everything was taken care of. We thought it was good. They made the ditch pretty. The ditch had had a deep channel in it before. After they were done, we didn't get flooded until 2010. We got flooded again. What's going on? Now, bear in mind, we had not been flooded since 1983 until this happened. I went down and looked to see what's going on, and I found out that a tin horn had been crushed by the backhoe that they had used. It pulled it back and took a 12-inch tin horn down to about six inches. I complained about that. They came out eventually and cut it, cut it straight down and over at a 90-degree angle, and it drains now. So, we thought that had taken care of it. I had five years, that's 2010, we had five years of virtual drought. This year, we start having rains again. We had water in our house, under our house, eight times. We had water in our house five times. That is, I think, 12 times we've had water in our house. At this point, it got in there so many times it wouldn't dry out. We had black mold growing. I had people, I talked to Mr. Mcatee, and he said, get some people to check it. I had people check it. There is a report that I have given to the counselor's office. We have the mold growing in there, in virtually every wall in that area of the house, it's a lower area. I've talked to the counselors several times. They've talked about denying it each time. Finally, Amy came out and looked at what I've been talking about, and I showed her the problem. And where they had come out and worked on that ditch, they left a high spot right as you turn the corner. It's a dam. It will not drain. We, I think it was right after Christmas, the 27th, we had, 26th or 27th, we had some rains again, and it got up again. Did not get in the house this time, but close. And I have pictures here. I've been taking pictures when it's not at night, when it's daylight, and the ditch doesn't drain. Now, the engineers had come out and said, it's my fault. Said it's the tin horn I have in my drain, or in, over, under my driveway. That's not been a problem. The problem is when it backs up down on the neighbor's place and starts coming back up and gets high, then everything floods. I received a letter, I've been in Dallas the last week, I received a letter, I guess it came in Friday, I found it Sunday, saying that they were denying it, and they said that they were enclosing a copy of the memo that were presented to you. This is what I got. I have no idea what their logic is. When Amy came out back in December, I showed her where it's blocked, and she says, I see what you're talking about now. I thought we were good. I thought she understood and we were going to be taking care of this. So, now it's denied again, and I have no idea of a reason why. But our house is damaged, and I had people come out and I did an estimate, and that's it. I need my house fixed. It's been damaged. I don't have the money to fix it. I've been putting kids through college and five operations in the last six years. So, I, yeah, I need this done, I need this taken care of. Do you have any questions?
No, no questions. Let me get some, let me bring up our legal representative and give us some information.
I'm not sure why your memo was not in your envelope. Okay. We have been working on this claim for quite some time. It was set on council once before and stricken so we could do some further checking. The law on stormwater drainage is that everyone has a duty to protect their own property, basically. The city provides some stormwater drainage, but we're not required to by the law. Once we start to do that, we have to do it in a reasonable manner, and if there are any problems, we have to respond to fix them, which it appears we have done every time we've gotten a call about something that's wrong. Unless we've made it worse, we cannot be held liable for damages from water. The further problem with this claim legally is that the damages, according to Mr. Webb, have been accruing for years, but the Torque Claims Act only would require a claim for damage which has happened within a year from the time, from the event. So, if we go back a year from when he filed this claim, it does not go back to cover all those many years before. We have had people out there to look. I know Amy Harrison went out there. I know that Public Works personnel have been out there several times. I don't know that we can confirm that city machinery made those problems in the ditch. I don't have any idea, I don't think anybody does, what happened with the dam around the corner. If we knew that we had caused a problem, we could fix it. Right now, we don't know that we caused any problems of any kind, that any of this is our fault. I would also point out that on the dates that he's talking about in 2010 and 2015, there were 500-year floods, and so there was a massive amount of water everywhere all over town, and I'm sure there are lots of people that never flooded before that flooded on those. on those dates. Mr. Wenger is here. If you have questions about the property area, the investigations that have been done out there by his personnel, and he's willing to answer any questions you might have.
When you, when you say law, are you referring to state law that deals with how municipalities can be held responsible for claims?
Yes, sir. That would be state case law.
That limit our discretion up here, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They say what our duties are, and we are only, we would only recommend payment of claims for which we had a duty that we breached. Otherwise, it's not a proper expenditure of public funds.
Okay. Let's, let's say we did believe we were at fault. Do we have proper documentation on all the damages that he's requesting?
We do have the report he's referencing about damages in terms of mold and things. It, it gives us a number, but, but it still doesn't connect with how did that happen?
Right.
In addition, there are a lot of personal property items that were claimed for, and I don't believe, we've asked repeatedly for some documentation to help us with the, to make sure the values are correct. I don't believe we've ever received that. So if we were to come up with a number that we wanted to settle, that we wanted to recommend for settlement, even though we, at this point, we don't know why we would do that, because we don't know why it's our fault, but it, we would have difficulty arriving at that number.
Right. Well, let's bring Eric up and get some information on the engineering aspect of it. I think he was saying we did some street work or something like that, that that could have affected the drainage?
Mayor and council, I appreciate it, and I think I'll bring you up to the rest of the history that we've had with these public works in the area. So since 2005, we've had about 18 or so work orders, and these have included tree trimming, sign replacements. This would also include pothole repair. But the major work that Mr. Webb is referencing was actually a chip seal, which is basically a small resurfacing of a rural residential in the area back in 2007. It wasn't a complete road reconstruction. It was actually just adding some necessary material to put a new driving surface on that road, which is something that we do in a lot of our areas just like this one. So that was back in '07. You know, work on chip seals typically doesn't involve work on the drainage, and obviously, if there's some drainage work that would come with that, we would make those repairs if we were already in the area. But we've received a number of calls for tin horn repair in the past few years, and so we can confirm that we have done some tin horn maintenance when we have identified those areas that were in need. When we look at the site, we look at this particular area, it's very flat, so this is a, a section that does not have curb and gutter. It's a section that has bar ditches, and typically after it rains, and especially around this home, the water does pond. The home is at, we're probably slightly below the elevation of the road, so it is suspect for ponding water. So we've tried and worked with Mr. Webb and recommended a few things that we think could also mitigate some of the flooding that's occurring, even on some of the historic events. If a house were built today, the building pad of the house would actually be raised, but obviously, that's very difficult to do once a house is constructed like this one. But grading could be done to actually grade the soils away from the home to help have positive effect in getting the water away from the foundation. So that's one recommendation that we've made. A second one would be increasing the tin horn size would actually have an impact. The tin horns that are installed at this residence and in other locations are 15 and 12 inches. Our standards today are 24-inch tin horns, and so it would have some impact in improving some of the drainage in the area. And then lastly, we would recommend, obviously, in a location like this, flood insurance. You don't have to be in a flood plain to have flood insurance, but obviously, a residence like this one that maybe has a history of flooding might benefit from that. So it's a very flat area. Obviously, the historic events that were referenced by the municipal counselor's office, we do think also had an impact this past year in May of 15. I suspect that probably in May of 13, when we also saw a 500-year event, there was probably substantial water in the area as well. But at this point, there isn't a project that we would have identified at this location that would have caused any of the drainage concerns that are shared today.
Okay. Mr. Webb, I, I suspect, and haven't conferred with the council individually, that a combination of things are working against us paying your claim. There's, there's state law that limits municipalities in our ability to apply discretion to situations like this.
I've looked that up.
And the, the, I guess the, the other aspect of it is that we have to have, you know, evidence that the city is at fault. And I know you believe the city was at fault, and I'm not necessarily disputing it. I just don't know that we believe that the city was at fault. But there is another recourse, and that is to, to go to court and to file a claim against the city of Oklahoma City. And in that regard, you know, if, if you were to win judgment, we would be required to pay, and we could pay, you know, the damages that the courts implied we need to pay. Is there any other opinions or information you want to apply in this case?
May I answer to what?
Yeah, sure.
First thing, when I started talking about this, I think Mr. McAttee said something about a one-year statute. I looked it up. Yeah, it's a one-year statute, once you know you've been damaged. We thought we were good as of 2010. We didn't know that anything else was going to be a problem until this year. They talk about a 500-year flood. This happened not once. This happened eight times. Okay? It almost happened the other day. That wasn't a 500-year flood. Raj, whoever Raj is with the engineering department, came out, and he actually brought a topographical map, and it shows the drainage. It should drain to the east, but the road's there, so it has to go down the bar ditch. We went down, and we could see, because there was about nine inches of water standing in the bar ditch at the time, and you could see right where the turn is, where it was stopped. Nobody has made any effort to come out and fix that. All right? All these ti, all these years, the, the tin horns have worked. The tin horns have worked. Okay? He called me up and said, "We'll come out and put another tin horn in if you buy it." It's like, it's my neighbor's property. What am I supposed to do? You know, say, "Well, we're going to put a tin horn on your property." Guess what? Well, number one, that's not solving the problem. I can put all the tin horns you want in. The problem is, when you turn that corner, there's a high spot, and the, the high spot didn't used to be there, because that was very deep, and it turned, and it went on down the hill and on down into the creek. And it was caused by when they redid that road, or redid that ditch. Okay? Another thing that he stated, they did a oil and chip job. They didn't do anything to the road. They pulled all the, the blacktop, all the asphalt off that road. They came out there, I've got neighbors who can attest to it that were there, still living there. They came out with a road grader, and they pulled all that blacktop off that road. And that road grader is one of those equip, one of those pieces of equipment that was parked in the ditch that caused the initial problem. They had that and an earth move. They parked them over there, had no place else to put them, parked them right there, take off. They didn't think anything. But there it is. It leaves these ruts and these tall dams, basically, and that's when we've got, that's when we had the worst flooding. Pardon me. But it's continued, and nobody's made any effort to come out other than say, "We'll put a tin horn in." And that's not where the problem is. And they've seen it. Went out and looked at it, and he, he saw it. Amy saw it. That's what I'm saying. When she saw it, she said, "Now, I see what you're talking about." So you can do what you want to do. I don't want to take this to court.
Well, we are empathetic to your cause, and we just feel we're legally restricted on claims that we can pay, and this falls into that category. And so unfortunately, that is the conclusion that we're reaching, and you are entitled to your day in court, and we will follow the court's orders. Thanks for coming down. All right. Is there a motion on 9J? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council. Mark, do you have anything for us?
Nothing today. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Meg?
I just wanted to congratulate the team at the Tower Theater. Lights went on Friday evening. It's absolutely fabulous.
Yeah.
The interior space is just going to be great, ready for a music venue and lots of other things. Great stuff happening on 23rd Street.
Yeah, the live music scene in Oklahoma City is about to change dramatically with the Criterion and 21C, so there'll be three live music venues that are currently under construction opening up here the next year or two.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Great, great job.
David?
No, thank you.
All right. I, I wanted to mention that our, our thoughts and prayers to the community of Dover, they lost their high school last night in a fire. And, you know, for a small town to lose its high school is a, is a really tough thing to go through. So I'm sure they had trouble putting out the fire for, first of all, I'm sure they were overwhelmed on that side of it, because it's a massive structure, and it was a big blaze. But as they rebuild, I think we, we just want to offer our support. Pete? All right. Larry?
I'd just like to give a little promo or commercial for our new health clinic for the employees that has opened up downtown. I've had occasion since it's been open to use it twice. The service has been very prompt, very professional, and in each case, had a very good result. So I'd like to endorse that, encourage you to, as, as an employee, to use it. It's a very good alternative. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Ed?
Can we just talk for a minute? I learned in the newspaper yesterday that OG&E is not going to move forward on their, their building. Can we talk about what happens with that land? Where, where we go from here? Any thoughts?
OG&E has indicated they're going to do some short-term improvements to at least make it look better for the short term, but this is more related to some business decisions that they believe, the climate at this point in time, and, and I think they are, they've represented, to me at least, that they are committed to, to doing something significant on that side sometime in the future.
But they, they own the land. They're responsible for the land.
I'm a little unclear on that.
I'm, I'm a little unclear, too. And, and I guess that, I, that's my first thought in, in this, which is really heartbreaking, that we, that we tore down the Stage Center, and now we have a field. I, I don't, I think that whether you, the, the way this was initially couched was it was going to require a large tax increment financing award to make it happen. I believe that OG&E was in the beginning and through the whole process was the entity that was, that was moving this forward, and that they used Rainey Williams as a, as a front or as a ruse to get through the, the negative publicity that would come with taking down the Stage Center. And then once you got through that, Rainey Williams disappears, and it's CLACO, and then CLACO kind of disappears, and then it's OG&E. I think it was OG and all, all the time. The, the decision about whether you would give tax increment financing awards to a public utility company that's regulated by a corporation commission and guaranteed a profit is a policy decision that this council would seemingly have to make. It'd be different than giving it to a private developer. You're, you're giving an award to a public utility, and by running this ruse, this dishonest ruse, you deprive the city council of the opportunity to make that policy decision. And I think that's very, very unfortunate, because we could have had that policy decision at the very beginning. Maybe we decided we don't want to give this enormous award to a public utility company that's guaranteed a profit, and then that land becomes available for, say, a convention center or a convention. I mean, it was only when the two of the four buildings were off the table that then we, that became a possibility for the Convention Center Hotel. It opened up some possibilities. Maybe Devon doesn't need to level an entire city block of our last intact grouping of historic buildings, and they could have used that land. Of course, they were involved in the same kind of ruse with Prefteks being the front and, and buying all these buildings and, and running this ruse that Prefteks is, is doing all this, when in reality, it's Devon Energy and OG&E who pick frontmen to, to get through all the negative publicity. But by doing that, it deprives the public of, of honest conversation about what's going on. It deprives the city council of an honest policy decision. Now, I think what's interesting is that somebody ran a, a very, very expensive poll four to six weeks ago, probably six, 700 people, live callers. I mean, it would be 30, 35, $40,000, and they asked about these buildings. And they asked about, have we gone too far in terms of historic, tearing down historic buildings for development? They asked about these buildings in particular. They wanted to know where the public was before this decision came out yesterday. So if somebody's interested, you know, they use Cole Hargraves. There's only a couple, I mean, it could either be the Chamber, or it could be OG&E. It would be somebody with deep pockets who has a, that's involved in this, that, that could do that kind of poll, and they wanted to know where the public was. I, I don't, obviously, I don't know the results of that, but I'm, I'm assuming that maybe the public is tiring of these kind of large corporate welfare expenditures, especially to a public utility body. If they had known at the beginning that this was OG&E instead of G. Rainey Williams, I think we would have had a very different conversation. Something has to change. I mean, you can't tear down historic things like the Stage Center and not have a 110% contract written in blood as to what you're going to do with the financing in place and then get it done. You can't just tear down historic things and then, and then not do it. I mean, so it seems that even though we amended our demolition ordinance, something's got to change. In addition to that, to, not that we have any, that many historic buildings left, we've kind of finished the pay plan, if you will, on those, on those last two projects. But finally, I would say, you know, we, we have the same problem with the media that's plagued us for decades, which is that if you're in the media, you have a choice. You either can have access to the Alliance for Economic Development, to different people, the small number of people that we've concentrated these decisions with, and if you want access, then you have to put on your cheerleader uniform and give one specific, you know, bent on things and not ask questions. Or if you're critical of these kind of decisions, say, the Red Dirt Report or something like that, you don't even get your, your, your phone call returned. You don't even get to ask a question. And so I know that those at the Oklahoman, that those who are running on it, they know that G. Rainey Williams was not possible, was not capable of pulling this off by himself, and that that was a ruse, that Prefteks was not buying all these buildings and getting ready to demolish the city's last intact grouping, that he could not do that. I know that they knew that, but they didn't say one word about it in the Oklahoman, not one word that I, that I can remember or recall. And I just think that's very unfortunate, and it puts us in a real predicament in terms of the, the public helping us decide policy. It's heartbreaking, their decision, and I think it could have been, could have come out a much different way. Thanks.
James?
All right.
City manager reports.
Once again, we bring Julie Banks back. She, she did such great job at the beginning. We thought we'd start and end the meeting with Julie.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to share with you what 2015 was like for the animal population in Oklahoma City. One year ago this month, I moved to Oklahoma City to take on the role of the superintendent of animal welfare, and I am so glad that I did. I'm very happy to have joined a team of individuals who work within your animal sheltering program and field service program that has made such a difference in the lives of animals over the past 10 years. And I'm very proud to work with John Gary, the director of operations, Jerita Becker, our administrative specialist, Dr. Benue, our chief veterinarian, Tracy Lyons, our head of our field services. And special thank you to my bosses, Rick Wickenkamp and Bob Teener and Laura Johnson and you guys, for allowing us to get creative and for allowing us to do some really innovative and exciting things to make a difference in both animals' and people's lives. I believe very strongly that an animal shelter is not just a place where animals go to, but it's actually a social, social service agency, because we are dealing with society's issues. The product just happens to be about the animal. We are seeing poverty. We are seeing people being evicted. We are seeing lots of different issues that individuals face, and ultimately, the animals are facing because of the issues that the people are facing. The animals don't come to us without a person attached, and we are looking as an organization on how we play a role in the community, involved in all different facets and all different issues. But I have the opportunity now to share with you all the wonderful things that have happened in Oklahoma City for animals in, in 2015, and we had many goals as an organization, but we started pretty much focusing on three. The first was increase, increasing the shelter's live release rate. And when we're looking at live release rate, we are looking at a couple of different factors. We're looking at adoptions. How many animals can we actually adopt into new homes? We have incredible animals that come into the animal shelter, and it's been our job to make sure that people know about them. People know that we are a place that they can come to to get their new best friend and not a place that is scary, or not a place that they don't want to come to because they're frightened of how they're going to feel. So we have really spent a lot of time increasing the visibility of the animals that we have through social media, through the traditional media, through word of mouth, in any way that we can to let people know that the animals in our animal shelter are amazing pets and are, is the place that you should go to, and we've certainly seen an increase there. certainly seen an increase there. We've also spent a lot of focus on lost and found. People lose animals. And we are really spending a lot of energy in helping people identify their role in that and placing ID tags, microchips, anyway. But we've also created a new online system. We've had an online system for a while, but we've actually turned on the found part of our online system. So now we have allowed people to actually post reports of found animals instead of putting them into the shelter. They can actually connect with a potential owner that way. And then our transfer program, which is a huge part of our network, we cannot do the work that we do without the support of our partner agencies. We work with over 100 agencies in this city and beyond who help us transfer animals from our care into their programs. Our two largest partners are the Central Oklahoma Humane Society and the Bella Foundation. And both of those organizations alone have transferred over 3,500 animals from our facility into their programs and ultimately adopted into new homes. But as I mentioned a minute ago, we have over 100 partners that have worked with us to really look at the community issues, not just our issues, but how we can work together to make a difference. Those three points make up our live release rate. And I'm excited to say that we hit at the end of this year a 70% live release rate, which is 3% more than last year. So while it's only a small amount more, and I'm going to show your chart in a minute, it's still increasing, increasing, increasing every year. And we were incredibly excited to know that in the month of December, we actually had three awesome months. We had three months, two, excuse me, three awesome weeks. We had two weeks where we hit over 100% live release rate. One was 108% live release rate. The other one, I believe, was 104%. And then the next month was, the next week was 90%. So we are well on our way to meeting our goals of increasing that live release rate.
That probably should have been in a larger font.
Yes, I know. I was giving some excitement. Actually, go back for a second.
About 10 years ago, wasn't our live release rate like in the low 20s?
Yeah. And I'm going to show that chart in about two seconds. But we've also been focusing on decreasing intake through different methods of education, through programming, and I'll share some of the program that we've done there. So if you go to the next slide, you will see exactly what you just said. Our placements since 2010 have gone up dramatically. It just keeps going up. We started with about a 23% live release rate and ended this year with a 70% live release rate. And that's just incredible news. But we're not there yet. There's still 30% of the animals that need help. Some of those animals are not going to be able to be helped due to aggression or medical issues. But there's still a large percentage of animals that could use support and all the programming we're talking about. And we're just showing that it's going up and up and up. Next slide. You're also seeing that our intake is going down, 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 which is what you want. Because you can't really adopt your way out of a problem. You need to stop the flow of the problem coming in in the first place. And we are just seeing it go down, down, down. At one point, we had over 30,000 animals coming into our sheltering program and now we're down to just a little over 24,000. A community our size should have a lot lower than this and we are certainly on our way to make that happen. And then live release rate keeps going up, up, up. So it is our goal, as we continue our increasing the live release rate goal, to continue to see this go up, up and up and the sheltering go down, down, down. Our second goal was to enhance customer care for people and animals. We consider both the people and the animals, the customers in our building. And not only have we put some extra emphasis on helping people become responsible pet owners and providing them services and opportunities to be that, we've also been looking at how we can do a better job of caring for the animals in our building. You see a number here. We've actually managed in 2015 to decrease disease in our building by 35%. That is a big deal. When you are sheltering animals that you don't know where those animals come from, you don't know if they had vaccines before they came in the door, you don't know if they're harboring any type of illness, you have to manage your population very carefully. And to be able to decrease disease rather than seeing increase is actually great news. And there were quite a few ways that we did that. First of all, thanks to you, we have put over $750,000 into renovating our kennels. The new kennels that we have, you can actually see the picture right there, have glass fronts which help prevent the spread of upper respiratory infection and other diseases. We also have a new flooring which allows us to clean the kennels better. And it allows us the opportunity to manage the population in a much better, safe way and to prevent disease. The second thing is you authorized a new cleaning solution for us, which also is a really big deal. Because the new cleaning solution not only has allowed us to cut down on manpower for how long it takes us to clean the kennels, but it also does a better job of preventing disease and making disease go away. And then finally, with a, this year, we received a donation of two years' worth of pet food from the Shawnee Milling Company. And being able to provide a consistent diet for our animals also helps with disease prevention. Those three programs together, we believe, resulted in this direct decrease in disease. We've also put a bunch of effort on our foster care program and our Angel Fund, which is a donation-based fund where individuals can support and provide money to go above and beyond for special care for the animals that we have. And that has allowed us the opportunity to fix animals that are broken, care for animals that might be sick, and ultimately get them out alive. So thank you, very special thank you to the public for donating to those funds and to our volunteers for providing the time to be foster parents. And it has worked. It has really made a difference in the animals in our building. To focus just a second on our animal control work, we also purchased 10 new vehicles, which is going to allow us to have, to be able to get out in the field quicker. We were down some vehicles that needed to go to, to be replaced. And this has allowed us to be able to make the calls that come in. And our field officers have also had a new emphasis on education and outreach. So it's not just about enforcement. While enforcement is important, it's also about education, outreach, animal rescue, and combining those things and working with the customer on their complaint and whatever their issue is so that we can address it in a way that's meaningful to that individual. And that goes to the third goal, which is focusing on community education and engagement. I have found pretty quickly upon starting that there were a lot of people out there that really care about their animals. And a lot of people out there who wanted to get involved and help us do the job that they expected us to do and that we wanted to do. So we started looking at the opportunities for involvement from the community. And it's almost if you build it, they will come. That's exactly what happened. We put some more emphasis into our outreach programs. And we now have a television show called Animal Tales TV on Channel 20. We have seen an increase in social media on Facebook and Twitter, dramatic. We spent a lot of time telling the stories of the animals that have come in our door because every one of them have a story to tell. And just sharing that information gives a little bit more of awareness to the animals that we have and then focuses on adoptions and other things like that. As I said earlier, we focus a lot on adoption outreach to really show those special stories of those animals and find them new homes. We've also listened to our community where they said, we are willing to help here. So we have shown an incredible increase in our online donations. As you could see the number there, we've increased our online donations by 99%. That basically says the community wants to help and make a difference. And last week at the city council meeting, you approved a new organization called, to work, have an MOU with the city called Patrons for Oklahoma City Animal Shelter, which will continue the trend that we're seeing in increased donations and online support. We have had an increase in focus on education, as I mentioned before. And we've done many different training opportunities for the community as well as some of our partner agencies like the police department and others so that we can learn better about how to work together, updated our phone scripts. We've had a lot of different, you can go next, John, a lot of different individual items that we've done to try to increase education. And then community programming. There, as I had started with, if we are a social service agency, then we have that responsibility to provide opportunities and help for the individuals who need them. So we have been focusing energy on our special programs like our low cost, excuse me, our no cost Spaino de Program for any citizen of Oklahoma City, our Food Bank Program, our Community Cat Program, all have had direct impact in decreasing animals coming in our door. We've also spent time strengthening our volunteer programming so that we can have a better training program and have volunteers that stay longer than we've maybe had in the past and create new opportunities for people to support us in volunteerism, whether it's through our Disaster Brigade, our Kids for OKC Animals Program, our, we're going to start a program soon where individuals can help us with our farm animals because there's a lot of individuals who want to help there. And we are seeing that people are coming. We create the opportunities, create the infrastructure, and people are absolutely coming. And they are really helping us make a difference in that community's support. Now, we have tons to still do, lots of work to continue to happen. But I feel extremely confident with all of us working together and moving in the right direction that we're going to continue to see those numbers go up, the intake decreased, and that Oklahoma City is absolutely going to be the greatest place for not only people but for animals in our care as well. Looking ahead to 2016, we still have the goals that we had before, but we're going to continue to enhance customer care for people. We're going to continue to focus on community engagement and education. And we're going to continue to increase that live release rate so that our success becomes something that we can share with others as well as something that we can scream that we've made it. So with that, thank you for that opportunity to share the great things that have happened. And I look forward to my second year here with the city of Oklahoma City.
Comments from council?
Just fabulous work, Julie. Thank you so much. I know you joined a team that was working really hard on these efforts and your leadership is just shining through. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Julie, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Citizens to be heard, Joe Sarge Nelson.
How are y'all doing this morning? My name is Joe Sarge Nelson. And I'm not here to pick on anybody in particular. Let me get my focus in a little bit. But you did hit on a subject, a calcipot about the media, especially, excuse Mr. Crum up in that booth up there, he's not part of this, I don't think. But Slackmeyer, Steve, actually, Lackmeyer, I've seen him in action. He's not even a credit to the publishing business. And kind of in a movie I watched with John Wayne, I think it was called, The Green Berets, I think Alan Alda said it quite well, you can feel violence for what they don't print. And a lot of it, they don't. And I've been around and watched this alligator operate. But anyway, to make a long story short, I didn't come here for that. I was impressed with one of his articles a few months back. And it's one considering the transit system. It was done on a Monday about four months ago. And as I read it, I was really impressed with what he had to say for the very first time. The article was on the front page, connected in part with the transit is the key. That was his starting point. And he told the plight of those that are working and the non-working and the people struggling to find work. And the problem of it all was the center of attraction is once more and again still the frontrunner of transportation. Mr. Greenwell, as I've recalled on several occasions, saw him on the bus and he recommended the transit system. Again, our transit system, the bus system, if we give it its elbow room, it'll save the city money. It'll provide everyone of you all a way to get wherever you want to go. It can stop on a dime, it can turn on one. At one time, we had something that was very, 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 very popular. It was called the trolley. And it was used in Bricktown. And this thing was ridden by everybody. Everybody liked it. The thing being is, it's safe. It can stop in emergencies where rails can't. And I don't see spending $200 million, $300 million on a rail that's only going to go five miles and couldn't stop on a pencil. And if somebody accidentally fell out in front of it, they're going to kill that person because it can't stop. At least a car or bus can. And they haul vehicles around. I've seen bicycles on the fronts of them and all the sort of stuff. Oklahoma City is spreading out, 700, 800, 1,000 people. There are people out here, these buses do accommodate. They help people trying to find a job. And you take this rail system, where's it going to take you to? It's limited on how far it can go and it's going to cost an ungodly amount and will be in the red for the rest of our life. It never will pay for itself. And I've done a real serious study, just as much as anybody else has on this thing. I've called some people, California and all of them, they say they'll never break in, even with it. They can't. But it's been there for so long, they keep it. We don't have one. We had one. We took it out because it didn't do anything and it cost the city a fortune. And it was tore out starting down in Bricktown. Now, I suggest, and it's this suggestion, bring this baby back into being. Put the money in our bus system. The people will love you to death for it because it gives everybody a chance at a reasonable cost to get somewhere. And the buses will be used greater and make more money. And isn't that what we're all about? Trying to make cities better and places? We can't make them all better, but we can help the people. That's what we're here for. Wouldn't you agree? But other than that, that's why I'm here. But back to Mr. Lackmeyer, he did write that article and it was a good article that he did write and stuck up for the city. As far as anything else he has to say, put it in File 13. It don't belong there, anyway. Thank you all very much. Y'all have a nice day.
All right. We have executive session. We'll be back.